We could get our whole thing now. It used to never get all of us.
Yeah, we did.
Good evening, everyone. Calling the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, April 21st, 2025 to order at seven o'clock. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So that's okay. Nate, would you be so kind as to call roll?
Yes, also remember Hatfield.
Here.
Also remember Benish.
Here.
Also remember Shadlin.
Here.
Also remember Graff.
Here.
Mayor Hubbard.
Here.
All right, moving along. The next thing is to adopt the agenda. Do I have any additions or corrections on the agenda before I can entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by council member Hatfield.
Second.
Oh, second by council member Benish. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, agenda is adopted. Next is visitor presentation. So if anybody's here for a, to talk to the council about anything that's not on the agenda, please feel free to come forward. You'll just have to state your name and address for the record. Come on down, you're, you're the winner.
Well, good evening. I just want to thank the city of Chaska for helping us do the things that we do. As you recall, you made some money available to us to revamp our boat. So I can report, the boat's in the shop, it's been stripped down to the deck, and now, of course, we're waiting for the flooring to come in. So we have no idea how long it's going to be, but thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you so much for, for coming up. We appreciate hearing the updates, and we look forward to when that boat is done. Okay, next on the visitor presentation, I have Southwest Community Park Master Plan update from Mr. Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just give me one second here, I'm going to pull up a presentation to walk us through. Looks like we're finishing with the end. I'll, I'll start us from the beginning.
Well, we do have questions. What's, what's, what's going on?
Yeah. Let's show. There we go.
Which house is yours?
All right, happy to come before you tonight and share another update on the future of the Southwest Chaska Park. And go through some slides here. So over the last month and a half, staff have been really busy going through what I would say is like Phase One of our community engagement process. And the majority of things that occurred throughout that this phase are listed there. It really kicked off back on Friday night of March 7th with our carnival event at the community center. We had a whole presentation of boards that were interactive for families to engage by putting dots up on things that looked interesting to them. It was also an opportunity for us to talk with the parents, mention information about the project website that was available, and encourage people to go online. And that was really kind of, the next part of it was putting up the specific project website for the park. Once that became available, we really promoted that far and wide, put it up on our various city webpages, got it out on social media, sent it out through a variety of our different list, membership listservs, emailed out to various groups such as like athletic associations, things of that nature. And you'll see in later slides that we had really good engagement. On that project website, it's meant to be informative and interactive, gives a little bit of context about the park and the site. And then on it was an online survey for people to take, along with an idea board. And that was where people could submit photos and videos, or just text that would showcase different ideas that they're thinking about. And it was kind of fun because people could then go in and like or dislike them too. So it was, you know, pretty interactive in that sense.
I liked the idea board. I liked that it was accessible. You didn't have to sign in. That was like so nice. You could just be yourself, right?
You could be anonymous. Yeah, yeah.
That was awesome.
Yeah. And then we conducted a variety of focus group meetings, seven of, seven of them to be exact, which I'll go through, along with a market study. So jumping right in, the online survey, we had a phenomenal response. We had over 3,000 unique visitors go to the site, and over 1,400 people take the survey. So phenomenal that our consultant group Confluence has said this is the most they've actually seen on any other project they've worked on. So big kudos to the staff, but I would say even more importantly, big kudos to the community for taking the time and going in and taking the survey. You can see it hit right out the gate. That very first week is where we saw the big uptick. It kind of leveled off, and then we did another push right before the deadline. And you can see there was another, another tick up there at the very end. Here, we're showing the makeup of who took the survey. We asked the question, where, where do you reside? You can see a little over 70% represented Chaska, and then there was some others from the bordering communities, which is what I would expect. I don't have slides on these other things, but just to point out some of the other demographics as it relates to who took the survey. So in terms of age, individuals under the age of 34 made up 21% of the survey. Individuals 35 to 54 years old was 68%. And then those 55 plus made up 11% of the survey. When asking about the number of people that live in your household, 80% of respondents would have three or more people within their household. So kind of what you would imagine, a lot of, a lot of families that took the survey. In terms of ethnicity, it was predominantly white. However, we did have representation from all of the different ethnicity groups respond to the survey. And then as far as household income, the majority were above $100,000 per year. However, we also did have representation amongst all the groups below that within the survey. So overall, I think a great representation of our community took the survey. So jumping into some of the highlights, so here's a question where we asked, you know, which park trends should be considered as part of this future park? And you can see the things that jump out would be splash and spray pads, nature trails, sort of this enhanced food concessions, food truck type of option, along with health and wellness and pickleball. Rose to the top there. When asking a question about what types of amenities should be featured within a park shelter building, just sort of thinking beyond our typical shelters that we have in Chaska, you can see overwhelmingly people desire year-round restrooms compared to summer only. There's this notion of maybe a winter warming house, which I think kind of goes along with indoor space. Obviously, we didn't, we need indoor space for that. And then that covered open air shelter. So that stands out, you know, as people wanting shade and a place to have like a picnic underneath it. So interesting feedback for us to consider there. We're also really thinking about how we activate this park year-round and thinking about winter. So we asked a specific question about what would encourage people to visit it throughout the winter. And you can see sledding, along with ice skating or an ice trail were the highlights there. The good news is we got some good slope in this park, so it really lends itself to, to have a sledding hill. You know, an outdoor hockey is in there too. I think that would relate to the, the ice skating as well. Next up, what this slide is representing is, the survey then really went through, and it, what we're really trying to do is kind of start at a high level and understand what, what are the themes that are the priority that, that people envision in this park? And there was, there was the ranking of high priority, priority, low priority, or not needed. And so what this is, slide is representing, in the blue there would be the, the percentage of ranking on high priority per theme, and then in addition to the, the priorities. So for example, on the very bottom there, you can see play, you know, 55% viewed play as a high priority. And then if you add on the priority, it took it, took it to like 83%, 84%. So if we factor those two together, you know, really the three themes that jumped out were play, sport, and nature, with a move and water close behind. So then after that, what was sort of an interesting question was after, after individuals thought about each theme individually, we asked a question with all the themes together, and how they would rank them, kind of in, in, in priority. And you can see it's pretty similar, but a little bit different because it's based on the average from low priority all the way up through high priority. So you can see play, nature, and sport are still, you know, some top things. The gathering sort of moved up within this averaging type of question compared to how it got viewed as an individual question. So it's sort of interesting to see the difference there. And here's some, some scattering of the different ideas that came through on the idea board, which was fun to see because, you know, this is really that, that sort of stage where people can dream a little bit and, and think outside the box. So we had things from, you know, skate parks to ice skating ribbons, splash pad, water park, camper cabins, a park-based restaurant, thinking about, you know, this notion of remember, remembering what came before the park, a dog park with water access. So really kind of, the whole gamut of things come through on the idea board.
Was there one thing on the idea board that got like the most likes? I don't even know, you maybe don't know, have that data, but.
Yeah, I don't have that data in front of me.
Whoever put that pool on there did a fantastic job.
I think what, I think what it showed me is this, there's a variety. There's a variety of interests that people are, are thinking about, you know, within this park. You know, and a big part of that online survey and this idea board is really just activating our community and letting them know that this project is coming and getting them engaged. Because there's going to be more opportunities for engagement as we go through the planning process. Here's the variety of focus group meetings that we conducted. So we met with all the athletic associations. We met with a group of individuals, you know, that, families that have people with disabilities. We met with the Act of Older Adults within the lodge at the community center. We met with the Parks and Recreation staff, along with Public Works, Park Maintenance staff, Chaska Rotary and Lions, the school district leadership. And then we had a meeting with the residents who live within a half a mile of the future park. The objective of those meetings was really, again, to talk about the project, talk about the, the planning process, create some context around it, and then really just start having some discussion and getting some ideas from them for, for us to consider. And then to also encourage them to take that online survey and tell other people. And to sort of be those stakeholder groups to follow along as we go throughout this process. For some of the groups, what I'm showing here is we, we did what was called a Mentimeter survey. So if you're not familiar, it's, it's sort of a survey that you take on your cell phone, and it's live, that we just did with the group on the spot. So the first slide here is with a meeting we had with the Parks and Recreation Commission. And all of these are just comparing the groups that we did this with, and how they ranked those themes again. So just trying to see, is there any major difference between any particular group compared to the larger community, and how it came through on the online survey? So you can see with the Parks and Recreation Commission, play, nature, move, and sport came through as the top themes. And then with Rotary, they've got sport, nature, and play coming out on the top. And then with the staff group, along with Park Maintenance, play, move, nature, and sport came through as the top themes. And then with the neighborhood meeting, nature, move, play, and sport. So you're starting to see generally some consistency around what I would say, play, nature, and sport really kind of being the, the top three, you know, with kind of this idea of move and gathering and water close behind.
Well, I think, remember, one of the opportunities we have with this park is, we have 55 acres that's open. So that's the stuff that will develop. But, you know, we have, how many acres do you think the woods are?
About 40 acres of big woods. We'll be able to preserve about, well, much of it is preserved by ordinance and things. It'll continue to be owned by the family who owns it, at least for the time being. But we have about 10 acres of it that is usable, right? Not what it's steep slopes that we will be preserving through the development process with Forestar.
Yeah, so there's our opportunity to have nature-based programming that we really haven't had as much before. Not that we haven't had anything, but that will be a specific place that we can have it. You know, eventually, there's going to be a school next to it. So there can, you know, when we've talked with the school through this, they've talked about their excitement about the nature-based programming that they can do being next to the big woods like that. So it's, it's a unique, a unique site.
And then as part of this initial phase, like I mentioned, we did a market study. And we worked with Proz Consulting for this, which they're a national consulting group that focuses on parks and recreation agencies. And what this slide is depicting is that shaded area represents those that would live, live within a 15-mile drive from the future park, which essentially makes up the service area for this park. And the market study was really evaluating the different park amenities that are available throughout this 15-minute service area. But then it also looked specifically at Chaska's park system, and was evaluating the amenities within our system, and comparing them to the National Park and Recreation Benchmark for kind of best practices. And it's based on population. So it was based on communities between 20,000 to 49,000 people. We're still fleshing out some of the specific numbers. However, I can share with you that essentially, we meet or exceed pretty much every single benchmark there is. And that's sort of to be expected, especially in Minnesota. Minnesota on a national level typically is regarded to have some of the best park systems in the nation. It's why we often rank highest in hea- in healthiness and happiness and things of that nature. Our real, our real intent in conducting this market study was to evaluate whether or not there were any significant gaps. Because if there were, if there were, we would want to account for that within this future park. There's some areas where I would say maybe we're a little lower on, rectangular fields being one of them. But beyond that, we predominantly are, are exceeding everything. So the great news is with this future park, we can just further enhance our system here in Chaska. And I think it also presents the opportunity to potentially incorporate some different things and differentiate compared to some of our other parks. As Matt mentioned, the nature component would be an example. Just to highlight some other planning activities that has occurred over this last month. So back on Friday night of April 5th, other staff members, Ashley and Aaron and I, were able to go to the Confluence office at their Minneapolis site in northeast Minneapolis. That weekend, they happened to have a company-wide team event. They've got nine offices across the Midwest. So all of their landscape architects were in Minneapolis for that weekend. And on that Friday night, as part of a team exercise, they broke into 10 different groups and did a design charrette on our park.
Oh, cool.
So it was a pretty cool exercise to observe and watch. And we sort of hit the ground running with some ideas. Those concepts we plan to have posted at our upcoming Parkapalooza event, which I'll be talking about. Keep in mind, you know, they didn't have a ton of context on the site. The, the main objective was just a team exercise. But it was pretty neat to see these professionals come together and, and within an hour and a half, come up with 10 different unique ideas for us to consider. And then back on April 10th, some staff, along with some Park and Rec Commissioners, went out and toured some parks throughout the southern metro area. And then we intend to do the same this coming Thursday, focusing more on the, the north metro. The idea there is, is to get out and see some different things and, and get some ideas flowing. And then all of this is kind of the buildup to come to the next phase, which is this Parkapalooza event that we're hosting on, on Thursday, May 8th, at the Chaska Community Center, within the Brick City Banquet Room. And so here, the, the landscape architects from Confluence will be there, from their Minneapolis office. I believe they're inviting some of their architects from their Des Moines office to be with, with us that day as well. But the task here on that day will be to start to develop three different concepts that all represent the feedback that we've received throughout the community engagement process. So they're going to get a kind of a head start throughout the morning. And then during the afternoon, we've got staff coming in sort of at different scheduled times, from all of the different city departments to stop in, be a part of it, share some ideas, share some information to help shape these concepts. And then at 5:30, we've invited city council and the Parks and Recreation Commission to come in. And that's really our chance to display what we did through the day, and get your thoughts, and showcase the different ideas that came through, and, you know, get your feedback on whether or not you think it's hitting the mark with what the community is saying. Because what we come up with at the end of that day isn't necessarily the end-all, be-all. There'll be some future refinement afterwards. So after that event, based on that feedback you provide us, they'll go back and refine those concepts. They also just put a little bit more detail into them. They label it more. Really, it's getting them more prepared to then put back out to the public. They'll conduct a high-level cost estimation for us across those three concepts. You know, before we put it out to the public, we want to know that we can, we can actually build it. And it's high level, so to be a range. We won't have the detail to really get, you know, to really kind of fine-tune the estimation, but give us a good sense of what they would cost. From there, we'll have another round of review with staff, just to make sure we're all feeling comfortable with where they're at. And then that'll, once we get through that, it'll kick off the next round of engagement. So those three concepts will go back onto the project website. The project website will be very engaging. Folks will be able to go in and literally zoom in on the park concept and, and create pinpoints on it, and then leave comments. And then similar to the idea board, other people can weigh in and such on that comment. So we'll, we'll communicate that out again far and wide to let everybody know that the concepts are available on the project website, encourage people to, to provide their feedback. And then we'll also have physical versions of the concepts that we'll bring out to our large community events, Fire and Ice and River City Days. And those will be situated to be very interactive and engaging for us to get more feedback. And that is all I have for tonight for an update.
Anybody have any questions for Marshall? Or comments?
No questions, but this is obviously very exciting. And it's been fun to watch, like the idea board, like I mentioned, and exciting to see the survey results. And whenever I talk to people about this, it's, they're always very excited. There's people literally looking to move to Chaska because of this park and the potential proximity to this park. And it's just exciting to see it. And I'm excited for Parkapalooza. So, great work on it.
The north metro, this might be on your list, but if it's not, it should be Gleason Fields and Maple Grove.
On the list.
We're going there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking, because I've been there for the baseball stuff, but they have pickleball courts. I mean, and it's got turf, which I will mention, I can't have a conversation about this topic and not mention turf baseball.
You should get a turf tattoo.
Uh, turf field, yeah. But I also, the other interesting thing is, I'll be, I was there last weekend, and I'll be going back this weekend. And I was curious on size, Holiday Park in West Des Moines is a huge complex, 62, so not quite as, or we're not quite as big. But you just kind of see, when you do a park and it's a destination, I mean, there were, now that's largely a baseball complex. They have a water aquatics field as well, and softball. But I think it's interesting, like, if you observe the hotel in West Des Moines, and you do things right, it becomes such a destination. Now, you think four hours west of here is not much more tropical than it is in Minnesota. But, I mean, from soccer going on down in West Des Moines, to 100-plus baseball teams from Minnesota driving down 35W on Friday, you can really see how it supports the community at large as well, right? You want it to be a community gem for, for citizens to use, but have that ability to host. but have that ability to host things like that and bring people into that community. It's just, it's amazing uh watching that number of teams kind of flood down, you know. They have, and they, interesting enough, they don't have turf fields there. Those are all green and it looks much greener than our fields up here. It's it's four hours south, which seems so close.
Yeah, but we're kind of on the, if you like, with soil and planting, we're kind of on that that categorization, that bend of where you.
So I just pointed out, because it's just amazing to watch in that area, like that springtime. I mean, you you might be in a hotel and it's soccer, you got soccer, you got softball, you got baseball, and they all come down because they've invested in facilities that can support those types of things. So um, yeah, I think that's cool. And like I said, I I'll, I'll say it again. Turf sports or turf fields can be multi-use fields when you use turf.
Were you sad that turf wasn't a specific question?
No, it's fine.
On the survey?
I'm, I, I know for a fact, when they met with the Baseball Association, and I'm guessing it wasn't just the Baseball Association that mentioned turf. But yeah, I just, I think you think about the unpredictability of spring in Minnesota. Turf tends to have a lot of advantages, so.
And I was gonna say, um Centennial Lakes in Edina, the way they have like the paddle boats and the, you know, I don't really want to call it putt-putt, but the putting green and and things like that. They've really worked into a inner-city area, some really cool nature-type things. And then are you going to Clifton E. French when you go to the north?
We're going to uh Tamarack Nature Center.
Okay. You should try to hit Clifton French because it's up, it's in Plymouth. But they have the most unique setup for playground. It's ama- it and Highland and Bloomington are the, like, the old chutes and ladders, but it's like that with the nets and the, you know. But it's like three different levels and there's like these, almost like an amphitheater for adults to sit on, so you can see all three levels, but then there's this I wouldn't call it a warming house. I would actually call it a, you know, a a structure that you can, it's heated and has bathrooms, but you can go buy food in and it is just, you know, and then they go down to the beach. It's a huge park too. They have lakefront, but just its play area is so neat and there are people that drive, we drive from Chaska all the way to Maple Grove just to go there. I mean, it's really a destination. So when you look at play and stuff, looking at some of those guys who have really taken playgrounds to a new level and made it comfortable for families to sit and spend the day there, it's really really cool.
Great job.
Yes.
It was, it was fun to see the response totals. I mean, over three thousand visitors, over twelve hundred took a survey, if I saw this like correctly. And the fact that seventy percent of them were from Chaska, but, you know, thirty percent, I mean, around the community, I mean, a lot of people like are invested in this and engaged in this and so that's, it's so great to see uh the excitement around it. So I look forward to seeing what comes about and being at Parkapalooza, like saying the word Parkapalooza. And uh, I mean, it, yeah, it's exciting. It, we've been talking about this for so long and it just seems surreal, surreal that we're here at this point, but we're kind of we're in it now. We're walking the, we're walking the trail to to make it happen, so very exciting.
And any kind of pool there could be.
Turf advocate, pool advocate.
Mini golf.
Mini golf, okay.
Like I often say, you know, the community engagement and what what the community is telling us is is certainly a major factor in how we want to proceed with the design of the park. You know, but there's other things that factor in to the end result, right? I mean, obviously, we have a budget, you know, that
Yes.
Mr. Poteraski's making me work within.
I'm the fun.
You know, there's the the site itself, right? I mean, the uniqueness of the site and trying to take advantage of what's there, you know, to maximize
Yeah.
that budget comes into effect. And then, you know, it's beyond the cost of constructing it. We, we got to think about whatever goes in there. What's going to be the cost to maintain it and own it going forward, right? And so we're not quite at those levels of detail at this point, but over time, those are going to start to kind of um present themselves as we go forward.
Appreciate that too, because that, that's a big, that's a big component. We want to make sure that we're building something that's gonna be nice and be um you know, be able to maintain, you know, for the community, that's going to be a draw that people are going to want. So I think the public engagement's been really good, but it's also been good because you know, we're seeking that, you know, it's intentional that we want the public to give their ideas and be a part of the process so that they have a stake in that. So I think that's important. Anybody have anything else for Marshall? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Marshall?
Yeah.
All right, moving right along. Next, we have uh five B, our communications update, and I, I know we have Mr. Kevin Wright here.
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember, one of the things I wanted to uh have Kevin talk about is some of the uh projects that they're working on. It, as you remember, and probably can still see with the sticky notes in the back of the room in our retreat, obviously, communications was a big component uh of that and uh how we reach uh more uh community members with the uh communication we have going out. So Kevin was gonna just touch base on some of the stuff that they're working on.
We love a Prezi.
Yeah, you know, I just can't get enough of Prezi, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna stick with it. Still learning, still fine-tuning my skills within Prezi, but um kind of found it to be just a little bit more fun than PowerPoint. Even though if you go on TikTok, there's a lot of good hacks on PowerPoint, so. So just, if you're a PowerPoint person, you can get there and and see a lot of cool things and Excel too. But good evening, mayor and council members. Uh, I'm Kevin Wright, the Community Engagement Manager here at the city. And Krista, who's in the back working the meeting, is also a big part of what we do. Uh, so I don't want to forget her. She's just doing something more important than I am right now and making sure that this meeting's broadcast. Um, in our kind of newish equipment, we'll say. But we'll get to that. Um, so just as a reminder of what we kind of support here within communications and community engagement, obviously, all of our strategic visions and goals. Uh, one thing to note, uh, as we kind of roll out the new ones or kind of the redefined visions and goals that we have um from the strategic planning session this year, we'll actually be updating these icons as well. So we've been working with a local company here in Chaska to kind of just create some um engaging icons, so we can kind of put them more on the website, use them throughout a lot of the things we do, just to kind of continue to uh emphasize the strategic goals of the city and what they are, uh, so that hopefully people will continue to see them and kind of get familiar with them as we go, so. And this is where I'm still learning. I had to jump down to this one, so instead of going. So there's gonna be a little bit of a hopping around, but as kind of just a refresh here of what our goals are for uh twenty twenty-five, um, you know, the, I'll kind of maybe hit on the things that we're working on at the moment uh as opposed to the things that are still in the future here. The big one for us is uh consistency in communications. I think uh there's a lot of things that we do and have done, but what we're really trying to at the beginning of this year, at the very least, is uh make sure the things that we're doing, that we're consistently doing them and that we're making sure to update and kind of build that cadence and build the muscle memory so that these things become a routine and become something that happens uh on a set cadence versus, you know, one thing here and one thing there and seven things over here. Um, so that's a big one. Our website refresh we're working on now um as well. One thing that's not on here, but that we just recently completed was um, you might notice that the Zoom mics, I should have checked beforehand, but I'm assuming they're gone off of your desk too. Um, that's just the trust that we have, that they got, they got done. Um, but all that's now incorporated into the camera system that we did have, so for probably about a year, two years, uh, our switcher was down, our camera system was down. It was dated equipment, but now we got it all back up and running. So on Zoom now, it's got graphics that show you what agenda item we're on. Um, it can zoom into different people. It's not having to show the same uh webcam feeds here. You can see how much more room I have with my hands, so I'm not gonna knock any cameras down over here. Uh, and then as we get into June, we'll be more than likely be able to get the uh cable station back up and running as well. So kind of step one is just getting back the cameras and step two will getting the the station back going as well, so. So those are the highlights there, and this is the, this is the real reason I'm here, but I gotta throw in more than one slide. Um, but so the, the one thing we're bringing back is uh Chaska today. Uh, actually, we're gonna, I think we're actually gonna keep the name as well, so. Uh, this was a magazine or kind of a newspaper insert that was in the Chaska Herald back in the early two thousands. I think two thousand eight was when it kind of um retired for, or took a hiatus, I guess. So uh, let's see if I can zoom in on this. The one thing I've been trying to kind of figure out on this, but I think that's a young John Kellen.
No.
No?
No, that's a.
This?
No.
Who's that? I was trying to figure out who it was.
Does it say in the article?
No, it doesn't. That's poor journalism for no caption on the the picture. This is a real one. This is a real issue. Yeah, no, I I AI'd this. I was trying to figure it out, because I was like, I don't, I know uh what uh chili's in the middle there, okay.
No.
I'll tell him though that uh you thought.
Oh, I'll tell him. Oh, now I got, see, I zoomed in.
Oh, it kind of looks like him, actually.
That's for, yeah, you know what? We'll move on. You got other things to do tonight. Um, but so the big thing with uh with this piece that we're bringing back is it'll get mailed out to all of Chaska residents. Um, and, well, and businesses, anybody in uh five-five-three-one-eight area code, so uh, I'm sorry, zip code. Um, so that'll actually probably reach even more than just Chaska residents, but there's no way to really stay within the actual border, either if you use Chaska or five-five-three-one-eight. So it's uh every other month, so we'll have that go out and it'll have kind of cover city news and initiatives. Uh, try to be broad in what we cover as well as incorporating local businesses and other um kind of areas of topics as well. So uh, it'll be eleven by seventeen folded, so front and back. Um, so that's, it's just gonna be kind of a one sheet. And as we go, if if this year goes well and we get a lot of positive feedback or or just, I guess, feedback would even if it's negative, would assume that people are now reading it. So to me, that's a good thing. Um, so depending on what we get feedback-wise, we could always increase that next year. If uh if it turns out we need a little bit more space. We also are working on a few new video projects. Uh, we have our very own Matt Poteraski, who's in a You Ask, We Answer series. If you saw that this past week, I think last week was our first one, we rolled out on park development and how parks are paid for uh within the community. Our, our next one coming out is going to be on City Square West. Uh, I'm talking about that. And then our, our hope is as we get going with this, that uh residents and people start actually inputting questions. Locally Yours is the other one that's coming out. Uh, we've shot a few of them already, so uh, you can see uh Taylor Hubbard and Michaela Hatfield there in the Forge, so that was one of the places they visited. Um, so I, we've shot two of those so far, so well, this one will be, I think, the first one coming out shortly, so um, stay tuned for that one as well. It's part of our support local campaign that we're working on.
Kevin, where is locally yours going to be?
Oh, yeah.
Or the podcast, the Poteraski Cast.
Yeah, so that's on uh Instagram, uh, so the Poteraski Cast.
Who's on Facebook, because I could use it.
Yeah. So it's on uh on Facebook and Instagram. Uh, for the locally yours, that'll be Facebook, Instagram and YouTube. The You Ask, We Answer will also, we'll try to get on YouTube as well in the shorts part of that. But yeah, so those, those are where those will be. Locally yours will be a good one too for kind of that longer format. And then eventually when we get the cable station up and running again, the locally yours will go on the cable station as well, so.
Nice.
Yep.
Love that.
Yeah, and you can tell there's an open space here. This is where I was gonna, I was trying to add a photo in from uh Taylor tries. And and or uh Tay Talks here, but um for whatever reason, it wouldn't, it kept loading it sideways and I couldn't get it to rotate to the correct way, but uh the tried, tried that. I'll give this to you afterwards.
That's okay.
I gave up. I just said, well, guess what? This will be a question mark. It's a blank space.
Yeah, it will be a fun surprise.
Canvas, yep. When I come back to present to you again, I'll just turn every picture sideways, so it looks like it all blends in. Um, and now we have our website refresh, so it's not necessarily a redesign with Civic Plus, but they kind of give us an opportunity every three years to uh kind of look at the graphic elements, especially of the website, so not so much site navigation or the basic building blocks, but you know, color scheme, photo, other kind of dynamic elements, especially on the homepage. Um, so our big focus is always to kind of go more mobile-friendly, streamlined, you know, try to make things so that people can see them on the homepage, or at least the things that a lot of people want to visit on the homepage. Uh, so it just makes it easy for people to get to where they need to go.
Should we call it a redesign?
No, because it's actually, I, they say it's a redesign, but it's not really. It's more like a, I think of it as a refresh. And I just was, I had, for some reason, I had don't call it a comeback in my head, so. When I was, you know, thinking of headlines.
Makes sense.
So, but uh, yeah, because a redesign for me feels like it's the whole
Yeah.
website. This is, you get kind of like five to seven elements you can kind of change or update, so a lot of these kind of modules are
Those are a refresh.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Thank you. See, now you're all gonna be with me on that one. Um, and then the last exciting thing that I just wanted to tease is our uh new five-O trailer that we're working on. So this is Officer Martine and myself on the, you've heard of our community engagement trailer that we've been.
Is that what we're calling it?
The five-O trailer, yeah, it's that's the wor- it's the working title.
Okay. Is that?
It stands for Fun Interactive Vehicle Engagement Opportunities, so.
Oh, it's signed, it stands for something real. Okay, I like that.
It also, like, police call.
Yeah. Five-O or the police, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh-huh. Well, it's part of the police. The police are part of this trailer, so. Uh, we kind of, what's that? Go ahead, ask your question. Yeah, it's a, it's a term for police. Um, but as we were, I mean, this is also the city of uh Aurora, Colorado, kind of uh I think originally came up with this idea, so we've been talking to the officer that put this together for them. So this is actually a picture of their trailer there.
Cool.
Um, so ours won't look quite like that, but I think the whole point is we're, we want, and I guess we're, we're open to ideas. We haven't necessarily put any skins on the trailer yet, so uh, we just want it to be a really kind of engaging name and then also kind of a fun look to it, so that um people, when they see it uh do want to come up and engage with us. So one thing we did learn in kind of our uh exploration is to not only just focus on the food aspect of it all, still have some of that, but then also kind of work in uh some other ways, like potentially like uh a TV screen that can kind of sit in the serving window, so if we need to do presentations to people or, you know, for kids have potential for some video games or just other ways where if we're not um, because we have ten events we can serve food in, and then outside of that, we can still use this and still be quite engaging, so. So that's kind of my presentation. Michaela, if you have other names, we can always go with uh something for, like, what could be on a license plate.
So is it just for like food or is it? Um, I get that it's like for ten events. Like there's, I'm watching their videos of theirs and they have like cornhole boards and like a lot of other things in it.
Yeah, it's kind of like a mobile block party.
Right, so that's, that's what we. So it's not really like, because for a second I thought it was like a food truck.
Well, so originally, that was kind of our thought was to be more, it was always gonna be an engagement trailer. The food wasn't gonna be.
The easiest way to engage people is food.
Oh, obviously, yeah. But um, but when we looked at, especially when we were looking at uh Aurora's trailer, we were like, well, if you put a TV screen in there instead of the serving window, we can still have hot dogs and other things, but with the way the permitting works for uh for food through the, with the state health department, you kind of there's a limit to ten, and then if you go above ten, then you're almost going into a full food truck type situation. So we really kind of wanted to say, well, we'll start with ten. I guess if, you know, if we decide moving forward next year that wow, shoot, we really need to serve more food at more than ten events, we'll, we'll look into upgrading that piece to it too, but uh, we thought then doing it this route might also create an opportunity to say, okay, if we've already hit our ten, we'll still have a, something that people will be able to kind of engage with.
And so we'll bring this to community events, but then can people also request it to go into community events?
They can request it in the sense that we're gonna try to get out to like some of the neighbors. They can request it in the sense that we're going to try to get out to like some of the neighborhood parks.
Yeah.
Uh, so actually get more into the neighborhoods where people can just walk up to it. We'll have it at some community events as well, but, but really trying to get more into like, you know, someone's having neighborhood watch party or just, announcing this day, we're going to be here at this park. So if you live in this neighborhood type thing. Yeah. So, I mean, no, I mean, people can't rent it. It will, will be the ones towing it and coming out. But, yeah, but if, if people want us to come out to their neighborhood, then we're more than happy to bring it. And this is, uh, the old, uh, cert trailer that we're refurbishing for this purpose.
Yeah, it's good to know.
So more to come on that, but just figured I'd throw that in there. All right.
Question that goes for you and Marshall, that old trolley thing that used to be in the city, you know, and was it owned by Jessica?
No, it was Southwest Transit.
Oh, I thought it was Jeff.
No.
I was gonna say that would be cool to link all the parks, the big parks, not like the little city neighborhood parks, but like, Lions Park, Fireman's Park, New Park, you know, like a, a trolley, like a.
Tour. Yeah, like a torch. Yeah.
I was thinking like a tram with another park, but it would be cool so that people could see all the parks and like, to get, you know.
Like do a park trolley day.
Yeah.
That's good.
Could be like a.
It could definitely provide the trolley.
Could be like a parka palooza.
You know, I like to have those progressive dinners, you know?
That's like a real parka palooza, right?
Park has an event.
Yeah.
Go enjoy all the parks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm serious. That would be cool.
Especially that is a park, yeah.
Park spot.
Yeah.
Eden Prairie does it every year where they go from Riley to Round to, I forget what, there's like three, but anyway, it goes around and then it stops at the, high school dome at the end for like playing. Yeah, it's just, it's cool. Like the.
That'd be cool.
Tram or I think they call it a tram, but I thought the trolley was ours, not Southwest Matros. Nevermind.
Well, it's kind of ours.
We can get access to it.
Yeah, it's a joint power. So it's like.
Yep.
Kind of one third.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I don't see it anymore. Is it dead?
No, I still.
For River City Days. I mean, they've used it for a lot of other things since then, but.
Because like a lot of special events, I feel like.
I feel like I used to see it around a lot and I haven't seen it in the more recent.
It's mostly for special events.
Cool. Any other questions?
Any questions for Kevin?
No.
Matt, any questions?
No, no questions.
Great job. I'm, I'm, I'm really excited to see the, uh, well, all of it, but then the newsletter.
Yeah.
Especially, I think that that's going to be a really great tool and resource for our community members, especially the loss of the paper. Um, and not everybody uses social media and it's nice to have a source coming direct to people's, uh, mailboxes that they can save and hold on to. Um, I think that's, you know, a nice tangible asset to have. So thank you. That's a lot of hard work. And I appreciate your work and Krista's work and, and all of that.
That's a great update too, to like, you can do more of those. We like those. That was helpful. I don't know how to say that a different way. Sorry.
Sounds good. Hey, anytime I can pull out prezzies.
Right.
That's how I'm down for that.
It would also be fun on that, that news, that news brochure that's going out to highlight like a city worker every month. Because I feel like I didn't even know who you were until you came to our block party last year. I mean, most people probably know.
He's not actually a city employee. No.
But I mean, like the police, they're to, to recognize who the police or fire, I, or even the council, like they're just, there's so many of us that I don't think everybody.
Yeah, another city did like meet, meet your plow driver.
Yeah.
And they did like a series.
It's just fun to see the, cause you see, I mean, you see yourselves or we all see you guys or us, whatever in the stores and in the parks and then, you know, so it'd be nice to, oh, I recognize you from.
I think that's one thing we talked about during the retreat too, is how do we personalize the services?
It gives humanity. Yeah. I think what we're doing. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something we can do.
And it was funny because I was getting a Jersey Mike's the other day and the guy in there was like, aren't you the new city council? I'm like, yeah, for your ward actually. Oh, really? Can I get a picture with you? Like, yep.
Um, awesome. All right. Well, moving right along, we've got, uh, approval of the previous meeting minutes. So let's see. We're having, uh, the website is crashing over and over, or Civic Plus's agenda, if anybody's noticed that here. So it's gonna do a little reboot here. Um, but, uh, we have the meeting minutes for, um, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Does anybody have any additions, uh, corrections? On that meeting minutes? Otherwise I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve minutes.
Okay, motion by council member Hafield.
Second.
Second by council member Graff. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. The events are approved and that moves us along to consent items. Consent items are items on the agenda that, need little to no discussion. Um, something can certainly, um, be pulled off the agenda to have a further discussion. Otherwise, does anybody, have any questions on any of the, we've got a little laundry list of consent items, but does anybody have any questions on the consent item at all?
No questions, but it's always exciting to see like River City Days and Music Festival and things, all the summer events popping up on there. So.
Yeah. I know a seven J with the Idol House, uh, it was really cool. Some, I don't know where I saw it, but I saw like before and after pictures and, they did a fantastic job.
I went to preschool.
Very, very beautiful. So I can't remember where I saw it, but I saw it. I was like blown away.
I went to preschool in there and, uh, is that the building you went to preschool in?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Thanks for knowing that. Yeah. Well, the before pictures is very evident that it was a preschool.
So it was kind of fun to like remember preschool in there and like see how it's beautiful. So.
So, um.
The one thing I did want to mention on the overlay program, so our overlay program came in significantly under.
I was thinking that. I was like, wow.
Yeah. So to the point where, uh, we're going to be working with a contractor to see if we can potentially add additional, uh, uh, road, uh, lengths onto there. And, we had planned on just doing the north half of the Town Course Parking Lot. Uh, we actually probably, if, if the contractor can fit it in, we can probably do the entire parking lot this summer.
Good. That'd be great.
So it's, it's, uh, you know, everything else seems to be going up in price, but, uh, we're not the only ones who have seen good pricing for overlays. Uh, but it's good.
Market, baby.
So cities, if you're listening, get your overlays. Oh, true. Just kidding.
Um, all right. Well, uh, I did entertain a motion to approve consent items.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second. Motion, a second. All right. A motion by council member Benish and a second by council member Shivlin. Uh, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Um, action items. Okay. A table from, uh, March seventeenth, uh, twenty twenty-five, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, and ordinance number ten fifty-five approving the preliminary plat and rezoning for Fulton Woods slash Pulte Homes slash PC number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, uh, item in front of you tonight, uh, you remember was at a previous council meeting, uh, the March seventeenth meeting was tabled to that point. At that point, uh, uh, the council had a number of comments about, uh, Ingress and Negress out of the neighborhood. Uh, mixture of housing types, those types of things as, as comments and, uh, did not want to take action on it that night, but asked to have, uh, it tabled so that, uh, developer would have a chance to go back and respond to some of the, uh, the comments that had been made. So, uh, Liz is, uh, here to go over the presentation, of, uh, what, uh, Pulte's been working on. We do have representatives from Pulte, uh, here as well. So I'll turn over the list.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, I just have a very short presentation for you to kind of give you an update on where things are at. So I'm not going to go through a full, um, analysis of the project itself, but happy to answer any questions if anything comes up. Um, but as Matt mentioned, this is, uh, basically a resuming of discussion over the project known as Fultonwood, uh, which is for the England and Two Acre Friends parcel being proposed by Pulte Homes. Um, it is for a preliminary plat and rezoning. Um, so the discussion, uh, halted at the city council meeting from February twenty-fourth of, uh, this year. Um, it was tabled to March seventeenth, uh, during the February meeting, but, uh, the applicant did request to have further time to work on their plans. Uh, so that's why we're seeing that, uh, the revisions this evening. This is kind of a, again, a, uh, resuming of that, uh, discussion and looking at the revisions that have been made. But to give you a little bit of refresher, which Matt has provided, um, some, um, highlights as well from that February meeting, when this was first, uh, reviewed by yourselves. Um, there were a few comments that came out of, that meeting in regards to the preliminary plat and rezoning. Um, so one of them was to look at the addition of a second access onto Spring Creek Drive. Um, mainly related to the emergency access into the development itself. Um, and then also commentary surrounding, uh, the variety of housing type, uh, within this neighborhood in general, to have them further look at, um, other hu- housing types that can be incorporated to provide a balanced approach to density of the neighborhood. Uh, so that was kind of an overall high level, uh, the feedback that was received during that meeting and kind of what Pulte has been working off of in, in terms of their revisions. Um, so the plan on this slide is in response to the comments received in February. Um, some of the, the main changes that have occurred since February is they have re-included that western access on Spring Creek Drive. Uh, so this access point here is new, uh, whereas before it was a cul-de-sac. Uh, the lot count has also changed since February. Um, so with the addition of the new access, onto Spring Creek Drive, it did eliminate one lot within their development. Uh, so they are at a total of fifty-two lots, uh, for this neighborhood. Um, from a density standpoint, that brings them to three point zero three dwelling units per net acre. Um, and then in terms of the housing product, um, Pulte, uh, will still be providing, um, uh, two-story, uh, plans within this development, but they've also, uh, will be including two, uh, single-story slab-on-grade, uh, plans as a part of the residence, uh, choice. And those are the Mary, Maryam and Passport Plans. Um, so a few images of those plans, um, and I'm not going to go into too much detail because Pulte, uh, will be presenting kind of more so their, um, their thoughts on, uh, where they're at from the housing product side of things. Um, but to give just a little bit of a high level overview, um, they are offering, the two-story plans, uh, that they were before, um, as well as introducing two single-story slab-on-grade, plans that are featured on the right-hand side of this, uh, slide. The two stories, um, are between the price points of five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. Um, will range in size from twenty-four hundred square feet up to three thousand square feet and have the option for both either two or three stall garages. Uh, the single-story slab-on-grade units, which are also considered their move-down product, uh, for Pulte, will range around the mid four hundred thousand dollar price point. Um, and they will be roughly fifteen hundred square feet in size and have two stall garage options. Um, and then Pulte will again have their own presentation to give you this evening to kind of go in a little bit more depth on, the analysis that they, uh, went through, uh, regarding your commentary from last time. Um, this slide, which is just a carryover from where we last left off in February, is just some things that they need to work on. Um, so I'm not going to go into too much detail there, but, um, just some things regarding landscaping, evaluation of pedestrian connections, further coordination with both ourselves and Carver, uh, for utilities, and, um, Spring Creek Drive and Stormwater Design too. Um, so from a staff standpoint, um, we're in a position, um, to maintain the same, uh, recommendations as last time, which, one is to, um, make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, which is approving the preliminary plat, um, and then based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. And then the second motion would be to adopt ordinance number one thousand fifty-five, which is approving the rezoning to the PRD eighty-eight district for this neighborhood. I also just want to point out that, uh, uh, within the state statute review requirements, um, we did, uh, request an additional sixty-day review period, which brings us to the ultimate deadline of June fifth. Uh, just want you to keep that in mind as you're kind of, uh, talking through things this evening. Um, I am happy to answer any questions. We do have Pulte here and they do have a short presentation, but, if there's any questions before they kind of take the, the stage here, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Liz? All right. Otherwise, Pulte can, Representative, you can come on up, take it away.
Thank you. Um, we have a few slides. I'll just wait for that.
Sure. Just one moment.
Yeah. I suppose name, name.
Yeah. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Haley Daly with Pulte Homes. Um, our address is sixteen fifty West Eighty-second Street, Suite three hundred, Bloomington, Minnesota. I also have with me tonight Dean Lauter, our Director of Land Planning Entitlement, and Tom DeSutter with Westwood Engineering. Should there be any specific engineering questions arise? So. As Liz mentioned, I just have a brief presentation to go over kind of who Pulte is, our approach to the site based off feedback that we received after the February, council meeting, as well as to go more in-depth about our proposed homes. So for Pulte, we actually started in nineteen fifty. We're a national home builder throughout the United States, but we build throughout the entire Twin Cities metro area, as you can see from this slide. Um, we currently are building in the city of Chaska, but under our Dell Webb brand. Um, Edelwood by Dell Webb was a development that Pulte went through entitlements and was the builder on. Um, it's one of our age-restricted communities. So it's fifty-five plus, uh, larger in size typically and highly amenitized. This proposed neighborhood would be a Pulte Homes neighborhood. And then one other thing that kind of makes Pulte unique is we're really focused on consumer-driven designs, which that means we're always looking for feedback from our customers and we do a lot of prototypes to make sure what we're building is what the market wants. As Liz mentioned, we've made some revisions since our February submittal. Uh, two main things I want to address tonight is access as well as product. Um, as you can see from this slide, the February plan only had that one point of access. And we understood that there was concerns about safety in case that access point was ever blocked off. So we did reincorporate that western access point directly west of that existing Bird Street. And we did try to line it up. So it's in between that green spaces for those other homeowners to the south. So it doesn't hopefully negatively impact them. So we try to take that into consideration as well. And then additionally, we had some cross-sections drawn up from our engineer to kind of show what this site looks like from adjacent streets. This slide shows what it looks like from Chaska Boulevard. Chaska Boulevard is slightly higher than our proposed site. Um, but there's over a hundred and fifty feet from the shoulder to the actual home. And then we would also, of course, add additional screening. That's what those green dots are showing because we're increasing the landscaping around those homes to hopefully add another buffer as well. Additionally, this shows it from two twelve, uh, quite a bit of distance here. It's over like four hundred thirty feet. There's a lot of vegetation. There's a pond. And on Mindot property, there's a lot of mature trees that we aren't touching. So that will provide a nice natural buffer as well. And then of course we'll have landscaping in the back as required by city coordinators. When it comes to product, um, we originally were only proposing two-story homes, but we understand that there is a need for a single-level living, living within the city of Chaska. Um, so first I'll talk about our two-story homes and then I'll go over our one-story homes. But our focus is to provide the buyer choice when it comes to these homes. Uh, so our two-story homes, we would propose six different floor plans, all with multiple front elevations themselves. And they range around twenty-four hundred to three thousand square feet, three to five bedrooms, depending on the floor plan, two to three and a half baths. And as Liz mentioned, these could be two-stall or three-stall.
And then. When you do three-stall, three wide or you go three where it's one deep?
No, just be additional ten feet on the side. So it would line up. And then this next slide shows some of our different elevations that I was talking about, where there's a lot of variety within them. And Pulte offers over thirty unique color packages per plan. And all of our plans would of course abide by the city of Chaska Anti-Monotony Code when it comes to new construction homes. And as mentioned, we've revised our plan to incorporate some single-level living. This plan shown here is called our Passport Plan. We actually built this in the Dell Webb community. It's one of our bestsellers, which is why we felt we should incorporate it into the site because we've known it's, does well in this area and it does well overall in the Twin Cities. It's single-level living. It's single-level living. It's 1,500 square feet, two to three beds, two to two baths, and it's two-stall garage standard. And then this next slide again shows some of our different elevations that we would propose and that homeowners could choose from. Again, these all come with unique color packages and would abide by the City of Chaska's Anti-Monotony Code as well. And then lastly, just as a quick summary, again, this community is 52 homes proposed. We did incorporate that western access point, so if there ever was a safety concern, there's two ways in and out. Two things we didn't mention particularly, but we did incorporate that tot lot, which was something we discussed during concept plan, and we didn't incorporate it along Spring Creek Drive, so it was more centrally into the community and not off that road. And then, as Liz mentioned, this is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. We're proposing a low-density product. And as in response to the comments from the February council meeting, we are incorporating different one- and two-story home plans, so that way the buyer can choose what best fits their needs. And then all of our homes are, of course, are high-quality and very aesthetically pleasing.
So in regards to the one versus two-story, are you designating certain lots for one versus two? Or does the homeowner get to choose and then choose, you know, where, you know, like, I want this lot, I want it to be a one-story? Or, you know, how's that pan out?
Right. Madam Mayor, at this time, we would let the homeowner choose what product they want on what lot.
Perfect. That's wonderful. Thank you.
That was my main question, too.
Anybody else have any questions for?
No, just thank you guys for putting that together. A lot better to have some one-story options. I think that was a good solve. I also really appreciate the second access. Another thing that really made me think is when I was driving that stretch the other day and how we've talked about how it just, it's like a straight down and there's speed concerns. Adding that other access gives it kind of a block feel that helps just slow traffic naturally or traffic calming to have that other access. So a lot of safety, but also I think it gives it less of like a stretchway, raceway feel. So I appreciate that being added and still having the tot lot and everything. So I think a lot was achieved. So I appreciate you guys putting that effort in and the presentation as well.
And actually, just to add on to what Michaela said, I really do appreciate that you have the one-level living because that is, I have some friends in that Carver part of that neighborhood, and it's mostly two-story homes right now, and it's mostly families but with kids. But this would allow for a different demographic if wanting to be in part of that neighborhood to buy. So that's really great.
Have your parents live across the street from you?
Well, I'm thinking about like the old, whatever, the old three-year, whatever is across the road. I think you're building in there too, but in Carver, and they have the one-story. And they're really popular, like they're extremely popular for the young families with only, you know, one kid or the old, to your point, mom and dad. But I like that you're incorporating that into a neighborhood that's right now predominantly two-story young families.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just echo comments already and just say thank you. I know last time wasn't the outcome you probably were expecting and wanting. But again, I think the appreciation of the partnership, we've worked before in the city. And so I appreciate that willingness to look at things and kind of come back because, like I said, it wasn't necessarily the outcome that anyone wanted or expected. But I think, again, I think this is a really good outcome. I like the mix. I actually really liked your comment, Councilmember Hatfield, about, you're right, it does become feel like it's a neighborhood again because you got two streets other than a runway. You know, and then that piece too. And again, I will then appreciate also the intentionality of trying to align that other exit so you're not beaming lights into people's cars because they'll go complain to Carver and we won't even hear about it, right? Because it's across the street's Carver, right? So what does that Chaska do to cross the street? But I, it was definitely intentional. I appreciate that to make sure that we're being mindful of our neighbors.
And I'll echo all that. Thank you for doing that. And the second access point, really, I was concerned about that myself. And I appreciate that you guys went back to the drawing board and came back with something that works. So thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'll round it out to say that I think this is kind of that key touch point when we talk about housing legislation and we talk about, you know, local control. This is a positive outcome of something like that, that, you know, granted, we're in a unique situation where even though this is sort of like an infill, the neighboring neighborhood is a different community. But we still weigh out their needs in mind when we're making up here and we're making our decisions. And as Councilmember Gra touched on, maybe the last time this came up for preliminary, it wasn't the outcome that was expected. But hearing the input of what we are looking at and seeing and what we wanted to make sure we had as a standard of living in that neighborhood, that you guys went back to the drawing board and you incorporated those key elements and those feedbacks into the into the design. And so we were able to come up with something that's going to be just fabulous over there in that neighborhood. So I really do appreciate you incorporating the feedback that we gave to you and having the presentation tonight so that we can have a full discussion about it again. And I think it makes everything better as an outcome. So.
Mayor and council members, thank you for your time tonight. We're excited to be in Chaska.
Thank you.
To clarify, we need two separate motions, one for the resolution and one for the ordinance.
Yes, you would be correct. I believe we have one for the, yep, resolution and then the ordinance number 1055. So we'll tackle the Resolution Number 2025-14, adopting the preliminary plat and rezoning for Fultonwood, Pulte Homes, PC-2024-21. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to adopt the resolution, number 2025-14.
I was gonna say, I did most of the heavy lifting there. We've got a motion from Councilmember Benish.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Gra. Any other further discussions on this? All right, all right. Otherwise, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, that one carries. And then, yeah, we have an ordinance, number 1055, I'd entertain a motion to adopt that as well.
Motion to adopt 1055.
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Shavwin.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Benish. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right. Both are approved. Thank you. Thank you for coming in tonight. All right, moving along on the agenda, we have Item 8B, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-22, approving the preliminary site and building plan for Beckman Coulter at 316 Lake Hazelton Drive slash CRB slash PC dash or PC number 2025-05. I feel lost without this thing being up. Anyways, take it away.
All right, Mayor and Councilmember, I am in front of you tonight. This is an exciting one. We've talked about before with the addition for Beckman Coulter up at 316 Lake Hazelton Drive, a building they purchased, I think about five years ago or so, not too long ago. But this is coming from the Planning Commission for a recommendation for approval. So I'll turn it over to Liz to go through the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and council members. We have a preliminary site and building plan for Beckman Coulter at their building addressed of 316 Lake Hazelton Drive. This is being proposed by Beckman Coulter and their engineering consulting firm, CRB. The site in question is highlighted in kind of an orange-yellow on this aerial exhibit. It's located on kind of the northeast boundary of the city of Chaska. So it does border the city of Chanhassen, as well as the Twin Cities and Western Railroad on its northern side. It's an industrial park located on Lake Hazelton Drive and Lyman Boulevard or County Road 18. This aerial also shows that Beckman Coulter really does have a campus up in this area. And so the red dots indicate all of the buildings that they own or lease up there. So this is one of a few from that campus. We're at the second step in our three-step review process. So this is where we get into more of the technical analysis of the project. There is an additional step following this one that's more dotting i's and crossing t's should this approval move forward this evening. Just in terms of those previous approvals that have been done, I'm not, not going to go over everything on this slide, but I think the more important thing that's happened recently is in December of 2024 is when we had the concept plan come forward for this building addition. The concept plan is shown as the image on the left-hand side of this slide here. The site that the building addition is locating on is roughly a 13-acre site, almost 13 acres. It's within a planned multi-use district, PMD-1, to be exact. This area is zoned for industrial use. The building on site is currently a one-story, 6,000-square-foot building. They also have surface parking lot that is approximately 180 stalls in size. There's two access points on Lake Hazelton Drive, both of which will be maintained with this building addition setup. There's also a couple of wetlands that exist on the north sides of the property, trees that also exist up there, as well as a, an electric easement running along that northern property line.
Because what's that little triangle that's not up there? What is that?
I believe it's owned by this neighboring site.
Yeah, so if you notice that curve going in there, there used to be a rail spur that came off of the Twin Cities Western Rail into that building, which was Preferred Products. And so I, it's either owned by the railroad or by the company that's there, but it had to do with that spur.
It just looked like a random lot size and leftover and, yup, thank you.
Just a few images of the existing site showing the building from Lake Hazelton Drive and then some of the open area in the north side of the property on the bottom image. So the request this evening is for preliminary site and building plan to add on to their existing building, which would be a two-story building addition totaling 148,000 square feet for both stories. With that, they're also doing a parking expansion to their surface parking lot. The preliminary plan is shown on this screen here. It's proposed on the northeast side of the existing building. The footprint of the, the new addition would be roughly 88,000 square feet. However, it'll be two stories in height that'll add on additional office area, as well as warehouse and manufacturing space. The proposed plan also accounts for for a little over 400 stalls with the initial construction of the building addition. However, the site can accommodate up to 529 stalls to meet parking code. So 128 of those are shown as proof of parking. So if they do need additional parking, they have an ample supply of parking stalls to construct if needed. The two access points again will be the main access points into the site. Truck access would mainly use the eastern access point, which would provide a direct drive aisle around the building to the east side of the building addition, which would be one of the main loading dock spaces. And then there will be another loading dock area on the northwest side of the proposed building addition, both of which can accommodate large semi-truck trailers through the parking lot. Stormwater will be handled mainly in an underground system. They will have some above-ground systems, too, to help treat and reduce volume. The building addition does meet the development standards that are outlined for this zoning district in terms of Florida area ratio and building coverage. They stay within those thresholds. And then the parking proposed is also within parking requirements. This is the proof of parking plan, so if they needed to add additional stalls, it would likely be added on the north side of the property outside of the wetland areas. And then the landscape plan, they're also showing a landscape plan that meets the city's requirements for this size of building addition. So they will be right at the caliber inch requirement for over-story, a little bit over the under-story requirement, and then provide the necessary shrubs on site, too. These images might be a little bit hard to read, but these are the building elevations. Just generally speaking, they are planning to use similar materials to the existing building out there, which is primarily made out of concrete panels. So the majority of the building addition will also be concrete panels with reveals to provide a little bit more interest. They will also have some significant window or glazing on the building addition, too, to help provide more of that emphasized entrance into the new building addition. Just a few renderings. So the building addition will be set back pretty significantly from the existing building, but will still have a pretty appealing view from Lake Hazelton Drive, which is shown from these renderings. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion this evening to adopt Resolution Number 2025-22, which is approving the preliminary site and building plan for 316 Lake Hazelton Drive, also known as Beckman Coulter, based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we do have the team for Beckman Coulter here as well.
Does anybody have any questions for, for staff or Liz?
No, it's pretty thorough, but excited to see this come and thanks for staying in Chaska.
Does Representative from Beckman Coulter want to come up?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Amy Salisbury. I'm the Senior Director of Operations at the Beckman Coulter facility here in Chaska. Yeah, so thank you for entertaining us through all of these updates we've been providing to you. We're very excited to be able to be here in Chaska and provide, you know, approximately 300 more jobs here for the city of Chaska. Maybe I'll go to some of those Pulte homes.
It's the benefits of having to stay in the meeting, right?
Yeah, so I don't really have any comments. I know you guys have seen a lot of this before, but happy to answer any other questions that may have come up.
Yeah, I don't have any questions otherwise, other than just to comment that, I mean, the building looks beautiful.
Thank you.
And I'm sure a lot of work and detail went into it. So I just echo the comments of Councilmember Hatfield to say we really appreciate you making the continued investment in Chaska and bringing those extra jobs here as well. So thank you.
Thank you. It's been a long journey. It's been a long time developing.
I'm sure. Anybody else have any questions for Salisbury here? No? Thanks. All right. Any, if any other discussion, otherwise I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-22, approving the preliminary site and building plan for the building addition at 316 Lake Hazelton Drive.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Here's a go-to.
My turn.
Sweating over here, all right here. Councilmember Benish, and then second by Councilmember Hatfield. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, motion's adopted. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us along to Action Item 8C, Transient Accommodation License, Chaska Lodging Management LLC, DBA Town Square Place.
Mayor and Councilmember, tonight is the night that we renew all the hotel licenses. We have two hotels in the community. You notice we put one under Consent Agenda. I purposely pulled this one off because I wanted to give an update on where things are at. As you know, Town Square Apartments, we have had issues with them for quite some time. To their credit, they've been trying to work to get things resolved. They do still fall under a Level 3, which is our sort of top level based on where things have fallen over the past year. However, I will say that since August of last year, they have not had any qualifying calls to the facility. So that's a dramatic improvement from what we've seen over, over past years. It's certainly not perfect. They had made the request to ask that since they, since they haven't had any qualifying calls since August, if we would consider recommending that and going to a Level 2. since they haven't had any qualifying calls since August, if we would consider recommending that and going to a level two. The response that I had provided to them is, is that it's really important for us to stay consistent with our ordinance. And that if we were going to reconsider it, it really would it really would be inappropriate to consider it before we have a whole year under our belt where they can show that they haven't had any qualifying calls. So you are seeing that we are recommending that you approve it, keep them at that level three, that level three requires them to have security officer in the facility throughout the night. Yeah, and all the, the different stuff that goes with that and working with our police department. But what we do plan on doing is revisiting this with them in August. Once we hit that sort of year mark and see at that point have things changed? Are we seeing continued positive progression? Does it look like they're heading in this, in the right direction and then make some determination to be able to come back to it at, at that point? So again, we're recommending that we keep them at a level three like we had before. And if it seems appropriate to you guys, we will, you know, revisit this in August. And if it looks like it's something that makes sense to bring back to you, we will. If, if we're not seeing any change, we probably won't and we'll probably just provide an update to you. The other thing I will mention that's happening down there, obviously they have their restaurant space that they're trying to lease out. They do have an interested party to, to come in there. We're still yet to see if they're able to, to, you know, get the, the deal done with them. But they are actively out trying to market that towards a restaurant. And so our hope is, is that within the next few weeks, we'll be able to come back and you know, announce that a restaurant's going back into that, that space again. But again, I, I pulled this off more so because I wanted to give an update to you guys on sort of where things are at and answer any questions you might have.
It sounds like they've been better at communicating. Is that true?
Yes, and the primarily like with our police department, Jamie Personius is the one that is really in charge of this case and, and if you ask Jamie, he'd be the first one to say that they've definitely seen improvement over time and they've been communicating better. And they have been, from a planning perspective, administration perspective, been communicating with us too about you know, asking, you know, when they're looking at potential tenants there, what we think. You know, do we think that they'd be successful tenants there and things like that? So I will say, I think that the communication has improved.
Have we seen them make, I mean, it's probably not much of our business, but I don't know if they've shared if they made any improvements inside or like worked on.
Not, not that I, not that I know of and, and I don't think they pulled any permits to, to do anything, so.
A couple plots on this. Do we want to continue to give a license for that property to transient? And I only ask this because it's so close to City Square West, which we're to try to do a lot for. It seems like that would be prime because there's not a hotel in Chaska and he's talking about like the baseball diamonds and all that. It seems sort of silly that we have such prime lots and land and so close to like down, building up downtown for this. And then secondly, if you say yes, that's okay. But then we should force them to have to make some updates, at least to the outside. You drive past and it's an eyesore, the siding is falling down, the shutter, there's some windows board. I mean, it looks like, it really looks like when you come across forty-one like you're coming into a ghetto in Chaska and you see that. And I don't think we want if we're spending all this money on parks and downtown revitalization, people to see that when they first cross over. So maybe putting some teeth into, you have to at least get the outside looking nicer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree. I, 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 we, we would like to see them put improvements in there. You know, I, I think I, I'll defer to, to Kristoff from the legal side other than to say that there's a process within, there's a process within the licensing for hotels that you know, if they don't follow the process, we have the right to, to pull their license and and then they wouldn't have the ability to have a hotel in town. I think it would be really difficult for us to have that stand up if they're making progress in the right direction for the hotel. I
There would be criteria for denial of a license, but if they are meeting the criteria and they're eligible for the license under the ordinance, I wouldn't think that there's there shouldn't be discretion for the city to deny that license. They would be entitled to it if they're meeting meeting the criteria and they're not ineligible based on the standards that are in the ordinance. As far as the, the exterior, those aren't criteria that are in the ordinance.
So.
There were nuisances that were identified, potentially the city would have options for enforcing under those standards, or if there were other standards in the code that the city could look at at bringing enforcement for, but they're not part of the, the transient accommodation license.
Yeah, so we have a, we have a separate nuisance license, which gets towards some of it gets towards the extra material on buildings. And when we get those types of complaints, the person who goes out and inspects those is our building official to, to really look at. Is the, is the proper, well, is a property in compliance with the ordinance? And if it's not in compliance with it, what, what is it that brings it there? I agree that there's, there's, you know, some things on the extra of the building that don't look good. I don't want to speak for Nate, but I, I would think it would be difficult to, to say that they would meet the criteria and the nuisance ordinance.
I mean, when it comes to nuisance, we'd be looking at things like overgrown weeds. You know, lately deteriorated.
And I'm not saying it's that or anything. It's not.
Yeah, I don't know that.
I, I don't disagree and I mean, that's some, that's some of the, the you know, that's some of the what's the communication that we have with them?
Yeah.
Is that it doesn't look nice, it doesn't function well.
We know, just thinking also about it, it's like we put the screws to Pulte on and you have to come back with this. You have to make, and then there's, wasn't bad. It just didn't quite mean what we thought. So now that we're saying like, a building that's right at the.
The difference there though is that that, that building's zoned already. When, when we hadn't zoned that property out there, we had a lot more discretion on what we could require them to do. With the, basically as that building is zoned, they have legal require, or they have legal protections that allow them to well, they have to, they have to go to extremes to not meet the, the zoning requirements.
Makes sense.
The, the city council has more discretion as you go to some levels of, of, of decision-making in zoning. There's, the, the city has probably the broadest, the broadest level of discretion in making zoning determinations. Those have to have a rational basis for, for how the, the for, for the council's decision, articulable reasons tied to specific things, but as long as there are rational basis, a court would never or students who would never, but should not second guess the city's determination in that. But when there are, for example, like a license entitlement where an ordinance entitles an applicant to a license, if they meet certain criteria, then the council does not have discretion to deny it based on criteria that are not listed in the ordinance.
Makes sense.
I have a similar-ish question. First of all, glad to hear that things are improving since August. I agree wholeheartedly. Let's see sustaining. And I do think that that I mean, if, until you can really fix that, how much money are you going to turn around and invest in the property? Because if you continue down that path, you can invest all you want, but if you can't fix that issue you ain't, you will cease to exist, you know, potentially, right? So, oh, I appreciate that. Until I heard that information, my initial reaction reading this in preparation was how long in theory would someone continue to stay at level three? Until you say enough. So, no, we're not making that decision tonight, right? I, I hear that. But I'm just curious and it maybe is probably not come up very often in the city Chaska. But that was my initial request. It's like, okay, like if this is, if August comes and it goes air shape and there are level three and they're having all that, how long does that sit? Is there, is that in the ordinance of saying like, or is it really to become like three is okay, but you're four, you're done and we have to make the decision. I'm just kind of curious with that.
Well, I can tell you that especially since this is renewal time. If, if we looked at their statistics and they had gotten worse, we probably would be making the recommendation to say pull their license. And so I, I think I, again, I, I think it's hard for us to make a, a good legally sound case when they're making progression in the right direction.
Agreed.
But if, if, if they were going in the wrong direction, we would be coming back and making that recommendation that we take away that license.
Well, good. I hope it sustains. I mean, I will say that it's, you know, I'm trying to look at, I mean, I first ran for council prior to twenty-four. I mean, then if you, in that area, those neighbors, it is the number one talking point to that, those neighborhoods.
It is, yeah.
And, you know, and I know like it, it's hard to tie everything that happens in that space to a location. And that's, that's not necessarily fair, but I also know, and I can't, don't have evidence to show up, but like you know, individuals unconscious passed out in cars that maybe aren't exactly on the property, which probably doesn't count towards a property. Now again, I'm not saying that I've heard any of that happening in the last year, hopefully not. That was some of the commentary with my door knocking. Those are difficult, but I am hopeful that that improvement is incurred because it is needed. You know, I think that is, you know, safety and concern for all humanity. And individuals in that neighborhood are important and the prior years, you know, frankly were unacceptable. And so again, I believe in improving and getting the right communication and those are promising. So I hope they continue that trend because I think they're seeing really clear that the end game, the other result, the end game isn't great for them.
Well.
And so that should be all the preparation they really need to say, okay, we gotta do this.
I think too, it's good that we've been trying to work with them because I would be very concerned if we had to revoke their license about that building sitting there empty, because if there's not a current home, it's much more marketable for another hotel to come along if it's an existing hotel. The second it's empty, who knows how long it would sit there empty and then we'd really hear about it. So I think it's good to try everything in the books to work with them and it does seem like I would have loved to see them here tonight, so if they're listening. I'm gonna show up, but beyond that, I think they're, they've made some effort, so.
And I'm glad to hear about the effort. Like I said, I talked to the owner of, you know, the Tommy's before he moved over Sand Ventures and that was some of his biggest concerns. And you know, now the Guardian Angels is opening up a preschool this fall. You've got kids right in the vicinity and just, I, I would, I I, I wholeheartedly agree with, there should be a place for everybody to stay in Chaska. And if that is the, you know, accommodations they can afford or need at the moment, that's great. I just don't want it to be something that impacts City Square West or a new preschool or anything, any of the businesses and and residents that live in that area right now.
Are we, then this might be more Kristoff question, but do we have knowledge of how many individuals are still living in that hotel on a more longer term basis versus actual customers that are coming and just lodging for more short-term?
I don't know if you know the numbers. I do not know the numbers. My sense is, is that you see probably most of the people who are there are probably there on a month, you know, month to month type basis.
And I forget, is it that we, is there a limitation of how much percentage they can have as that? Or is that not a limitation?
No, because there, you've, you've actually looked into the zoning on this property. The zoning's sort of unique.
Well, it goes to the definition of what a hotel is.
Yeah.
And, you know, hotel is probably make the number wrong, but I think it's something like twenty-nine days, thirty days. You know, no, no more than that of continuous stay. Well, so what do you do to break that continuous stay? You just don't sign a lease, right, for more than that and you know, it's very hard to enforce. What is, you know, the coming and going within that? That's what our definition of a hotel sets, right? So if I'm, if I'm staying at a hotel and I stay there for wherever the number is, it says twenty-nine. I walk out, come back in.
It's a whole news clock.
Start a new twenty-nine, you know, that's available for, for folks to do that, so. And you know, that's not unique to this location.
No, I know and I.
It's not unique to Chaska.
My, walking down the pathway with it is, my thoughts are, you know, I'm, I am also grateful that they have had zero qualifying calls. And if I'm understanding you correctly, because I was writing something down, that if they continue to have zero qualifying calls in August, we are going to step them down to level T maybe, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
To me, this is part of the ongoing discussion with them is we, we wouldn't have to at that point because they met, they, they meet the definition now for the renewal of their twenty-two-five, twenty-six time period. I was just saying that if they went, that we wouldn't have a discussion before August. I guess it was probably the base.
The reason why I'm talking about this is I'm also slightly disappointed that I, there's nobody else in this audience. So they could be on virtually. I'll give them the benefit of the doubt of that, but it's unfortunate that we can't continue to have this conversation with the owners because one of the things was is talking about some of the elements that are being discussed up here and having that conversation with them. And I think one of the things is, is the recognition of that we would like to see improvements. We have a hotel, but we don't have a hotel. No one can stay at the hotel if they're staying there long-term. There's I don't, that's why my one question is, I don't want to assume that there's zero rooms to actually book as a hotel for a short stay. But if they're, if the majority or all of their capacity is a more short-term, longer stay, then they're not serving the purpose that we've intended it for in this community. And, and we have events coming up in no short time that will help us if we have lodging and we don't have lodging. That's here and I'd like to have a further conversation with this owner about, you know, the intention of that space and what it's intended for. And I get it. I understand having a hotel in a suburb is probably challenging. Down off the main highway, how do you fill the rooms during the weekdays? But I also think that it would be really great to have that conversation. And I understand that maybe our hands are tied in some ways, but it one of the things I recall us asking was for them to really highlight that they're under new management.
Which they did. It's like the first thing you see on their website.
Okay, because I
That's the only place, I mean.
But that's the only place you see it. I mean, their reputation is still the same. And I get the onus is on them to demonstrate that, that only hurts themselves, but it's just one of those things where they're part of the community. I want them to be here and owning up to the fact that they're part of this community. And they're a big part in their, their domino, that domino's down to all the other businesses in this community. Even the space that they lease, you know, for a restaurant. That's imperative on them that they're doing their part. In order for the success of another business to come in there and be able to be there and lend to the community. Because that stuff falls back on our shoulders when it's unsuccessful. And I'm not going to take ownership of that.
It's not a, a great place because we had a friend come from Delaware staying two weeks. He went back to Delaware after a week because it was so bad staying in there. So it's not, you know, it's not where we're going to want curling center or baseball teams or any.
And they do market themselves as an extended stay. And extended stay suites and apartments, not as a hotel.
Which is on very unfortunate, unfortunate for us.
Because it looks like we have a hotel. We don't really have.
I mean, again, to your point, Mayor, it would, because the question I'll ask that we probably don't have the answer and they can't answer for us is what changed in August? Because flip side is, good, you didn't have anything since August.
Right.
The flip side of that is you had a whole lot before August. And so what changed?
Well, they did, they, they did see management change.
And so if that, I mean, and so if that's the case, good, because I'm just trying to figure out, because I guess I'm trying to get some belief, is that sustainable or?
Well, their management changed in May twenty-two-four. They got before a maybe less than kind council around that August shortly after. I can't remember when they were in.
Yeah, I know, I know. I got an email around that time last year of somebody concerned because they were evicting, I think, what were some of the tenants that were maybe. tenants that were maybe.
Yeah, I mean, that's I mean, that's something that they've shared with us is that they, you know, they've gotten rid of certain staff members that have been problems for them. Uh, they've gotten rid of certain tenants that have been problems for them.
Um, good. Okay. Good thing. But again, I I echo that just cuz it's like I give you the benefit of the doubt until the benefit of doubt comes back. So I hope that that sustains. Again, we'll have that conversation, what that means for levels. Um. But it is in its current state unacceptable, but.
It really is.
Hoping for, hoping those August, hoping you.
I don't know.
Hope it continues. Let's see. My water bottle is half full in this case.
Well, I mean, I will say that uh, the being classified as a level three is a economic.
It's a pain.
It's a pain for them. Uh, I mean, they have expressed that, that you know, they they do not have the desire to stay in level three because it's economically difficult for them to sustain that. Um, which I get. I mean, if you're having to hire that staff to do that. Um, and you know, you know, to your point, Mayor, I mean, uh. Maybe we set up a a meeting where we get them together with you.
Love to have a discussion.
Yeah, to to sit there and 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 talk about, you know, you know, cuz we deal with more of the technical side, but you can really speak to that community side that, you know, and 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 how the council feels about it cuz it's obviously this is one that uh, I don't think anybody's happy about. The condition that it's in, it's. Oh.
Yeah, you go door knock down there now, I guarantee you that's gonna get.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And I don't, it's rightfully a concern. Okay, we have a difference of a hundred percent.
Yeah.
That's a concern.
I just think it doesn't go along with the plan that we are all trying to make for Chaska to be this destination, you know, for curling, for baseball, for whatever. You know, it's just not in line with some of the things we're planning for this city.
Right.
Remind me, if a new owner, well, all right, everybody, I know the answer. It the the level was, yep. Which also makes it hard to attract hotel types that would be hotels. Although cuz you're inheriting, you're inheriting that 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 level of cost and that level of scrutiny.
Although I would say if if they were to bring a user that we'd say, hey, so it'd be a great user. All that's negotiable to me.
Yeah.
I mean, that that.
Reputation or.
Yeah, that that if you have somebody that has that type of reputation, that's good and they're bringing in something new. Uh, I mean, to to me, that's that's something that you'd say, hey, we we can look at starting this clock over again.
It's the chicken egg problem. Invest in the property, get better different clientele. Great behavior issues or fixed behavior issues and that's. But, yeah.
Yeah, and one of the challenges too, I mean, cuz we, you know, we sort of talked about. You know, when we talk about a hotel in Chaska, you know, what we hear from developers more often than not is if they were gonna have a hotel in Chaska, they'd put it up on on two twelve, well, not by Costco, they put it up on two twelve and forty uh, forty four uh, up on the industrial park. And you know, one of the challenges is is that uh, there's just what less hotels are being built now because Airbnb and VRBO have taken over a lot of that. So it's, you know, getting a good hotel and getting any hotel at all is getting more and more difficult.
Does the Chan Hyatt get a lot of people? That's the closest hotel that I can think of.
Me and the Holiday.
The Holiday Inn.
Holiday Inn, yes, sir.
I was like, oh, maybe it changed.
We know for a fact there's issues at that one.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Cuz I mean, they tore down their country and sweets for redevelopment over there, so.
They have the American.
They have the American.
So I mean, you got several new ones that were built in the Shakka area with the Super Bowl. Don't know, I don't.
Several in Eden Prairie.
Well, you gotta look, you gotta look, each community is different, though. Look at, look at some of the things that are drawing. You got Mystic, you got Canterbury. You've got an amphitheater going in and Valley Fair and I mean, you know, so every community is gonna have different drawing points for their hotel. And I think some of the biggest things, like I said, was that the weekends are never hard. There it's the weekdays that are challenging. And so it's, you know, providing that sort of thing, but but at the same time, when we have this existing space, we have this hotel owner, they've, in my opinion, battled half of the problem, which is a hard half. They've done like some of the hard work of cleaning it up. I want to see them be better at the other half, which is
Invest.
Invest and be a hotel, be a hotel.
Exactly.
Be a hotel.
Yes.
We'll get something so.
Cuz we have the, we just did the transient license for Super Eight and we have some other spots like that, so.
Yeah, and I mean, we don't see a whole lot different, you know, type of use at Super Eight. But the management has been consistently better.
Sure. And you know, they're smaller, their their location's a little different.
Like an eyesore.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Well, I see here, does anybody have any else other discussion on this? Otherwise, uh, I saw that there's a motion to approve. Um, their level three uh, transient accommodation license um, for effective May first through April twenty twenty six. Or then, okay. Motion, okay, motion by Councilmember Gra and second by Shovelin. Uh, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Once done, um. Eight D, moving along, public hearing. Oh. Public hearing.
All right.
Adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten fifty nine, amending chapter five, article five, is it five point four four? Is that how you say that? Five point four four? Sections five point four four, point zero one zero and five point four four, point zero two zero. Alcoholic beverages.
All right, Mayor, Councilmember, each year we have to go through the process of renewing our licenses for our uh, establishments that sell alcohol. Uh, we actually, because the state actually issues those licenses, uh, we actually do it to meet, match up with the state's calendar year, which is July first. Um, but before we go through that process, uh, if we make any changes to our fees, we need to do that. So that as people are filling out the applications, they have the the new fees. Uh, you'll see in here that Denise did do a survey uh, of uh, communities out there uh, looking at the uh, sort of typical uh, license fees, especially for on sale intoxicating, which is our most expensive license. And you'll see that we fall quite a bit below uh, what sort of the average is uh, out there. Um, so we are uh, suggesting that we do uh, increase it. Uh, I believe it was by three uh, percent uh, in each of the different categories. And uh, um, you can see in the the chart that uh, Denise put in what the actual dollar amount increase would be for a uh, for each. Um, so as part of this, uh, uh, part of changing uh, the fees, we do have to hold a public hearing. And then uh, aft- if we were to establish this, then uh, we then have to publish this uh, in the paper. Uh, before we actually implement that. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
My one question is, because this is a public hearing, was there notice given to the liquor license holders currently in our community, like specifically, or was it just, okay?
And uh, Denise, and Denise said that nobody contacted her.
Okay, so no, nobody, okay. Um, okay. Uh, anybody have any questions for for Matt at all?
No, this seems like a reasonable change.
Especially since our rates are so much lower than the cities around us. For sure.
Awesome. Everything is going up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Well, that that was my question was, you know, just trying to take a feel for the business community and, you know, if it was. No one can see, there's nobody sitting in the audience right now in our council chamber now at this point, so. Um, that was why I just wanted to see, uh, so obviously we'll still conduct the public hearing, but garnering the public feedback cuz like you said, costs have gone up and just seeing where people's feelings are, but it is good for us to make sure that we're staying in the in the same range of communities around us.
And the thing you don't wanna do is you don't wanna not do anything for a long time and then all of a sudden you get so far behind, then you have to make. It's a little easier if you're just consistently making smaller changes.
Yes, yep, stairs stairs up. Okay, well, uh, hearing no discussion or questions from council, uh. I'll open the public hearing for uh, this uh, uh, ordinance adoption at nine o'clock. Anybody looking to come forward?
Look, nine oh one.
You have to enforce this, he should say.
All right, well, with that being the case, oh, that worked out very nice. I'm going to close this public hearing at nine oh one. Uh, and so with that, any other discussion? Otherwise, I believe we have to do a motion. Right? No?
Correct.
I don't see anything. Okay. All right, I entertain motion.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Benish to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten fifty nine.
Second.
And then a second from Councilmember um, Hatfield. Uh, any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Okay. Well, just carry this late, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, next we're moving on to bills. Uh, anybody have any questions about a bill?
There was a million pages, but I couldn't find them.
There there was.
A lot. It was resale, 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 resale.
I think there was.
Also, it's.
It was a month worth.
A month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I expected it to be long, but I was like, mm, but no questions, so.
Yeah.
I'll throw a question out there. I just saw, I didn't give you a heads up on this. Here we go.
Let's see if I can answer it.
The challenge. I just spotted this one. I'm more curious. What is WAFTA dues? W A F T A, twenty twenty five WAFTA dues?
So WAFTA is a Western Area Fire Training Academy. It was set up back in the nineteen seventies. And it was a consortium of a number of cities that came together to purchase the old Nike missile site out in St. Bonnie. Um. Worked great for a long time. The fire department uh, used it for training grounds. Then they determined that there was, uh, it was contaminated uh, from the old Nike missile site uh, that was out there. And ever since then, it's been a fight between uh, the Department of Defense and WAFTA to determine uh, to determine who is responsible for cleaning up the contaminants on the site. So it's us, Chan, Eden Prairie, we'll call it, you know, all the cities sort of around here are part of it.
Okay, I'm glad I didn't stump you.
Yeah.
And I learned a lot. That was that was good education.
I'm, I don't know if it goes, I I had looks earlier through these bills to see if I could see it, but when are all these, um? Oh, what's the internet provider telling? The streets are all marked for the internet.
Metro Net.
Metro Net.
When is that going in?
Well, Metro Net's been sort of taking neighborhoods at a time. So there are some neighborhoods in Chaska that have already had that installed and have it available to them. And they're just sort of, they're sort of taking subscriptions as they take down neighborhoods.
Okay.
Now, they're not gonna offer TV, uh, they're gonna only offer the fiber internet.
Probably cuz no one watches TV.
What's that?
Nobody watches TV.
Yeah, yeah. I watch TV. But they're not, they're not a vendor through our public works. They're their own, like.
They're a private company. Yep, yep.
The flags are in our yards right now and I'm like, oh, they're coming in. They marked it all off and.
Well, I mean, it's it's fiber service to the home. So I mean, it's it, I think it will be popular when it when it comes in.
It is not in my neighborhood yet. I just.
Fine either.
All the flags went up a week ago in ours and they started digging yesterday, so.
Yeah, I, man, I think they came through the Clover Ridge neighborhood already.
Yeah.
No?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, um, the, I I think I heard my neighborhood's in the near future too.
Yeah.
Kenan Road is on it this week, I think, cuz they started digging.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Well, I just didn't know if there was any money the city was gonna make on that or not, but.
No, that's, I I mean, where that sort of falls is we have the ability to charge a franchise fee if it's cable. But we do not have the ability to charge a franchise fee for internet. Um, which is sort of interesting cuz the whole point of franchise fees are using the public right of ways, so it's to pay for it and all that. Uh, but I, at some point in time, Congress decided that they wanted people to have more access to internet and felt that if they put too many impediments in the way that that these companies wouldn't go in.
Yeah.
But is it our public works team digging the lines?
Nope.
Oh.
Oh.
No, it's their private crew.
Cuz our public works team was putting the flags in. They were there with the.
Yeah, we have to, uh, so uh, each, so when you call, go for one call for uh, like getting your lines marked in your yard if you're digging or stuff. So each utility is responsible for sending uh, their employees out to do it. So uh, so our water employees will come out and do water and sewer lines, our electric crew will come out and do electric. And then there's also storm uh, stormwater.
Yeah.
Stuff.
Okay, I was talking to the Chaska guys.
Yep.
We were at the park playing when they were going through marking and flagging, so I
Yep.
Didn't know if we were doing the lines or just marking.
No, we just mark them.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Benish. Uh, Nate, are you crawling roll?
I am.
Awesome.
Sober Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Benish.
Yes.
Councilmember Shovlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Gra.
Aye.
And Mayor Hubbard.
Yes. I know.
Till I forget.
Okay. Well, that brings us to other business. Let's start with you, Councilmember Gra.
Um, boy, I don't, it's seems like forever since we've met.
I know.
And I've been personally really busy with transitioning of sports. Um, I guess I'll just comment, uh, you know, it's in this last several months, uh, sitting on the board with the Southwest Transit. Has just been really eye opening and interesting. Um, just kind of what's going on. I I, you know, I I think the big conversations that really impact that, and I'll be honest, until I was serving on that group, I didn't necessarily realize how much it'd impact that, right? But just the federal government and grants and uncertainty with money. And when it comes because, you know, grants get promised and, you know, uh, different things are happening at the federal level. You have the uniqueness, I'll use the word uniqueness at the state level and how that is playing out. So it's just been really interesting and I've really got to know other commissioner members. I don't know what's what we're called. Is that what we're called?
Yes.
Yes, commissioner member, commission members. Uh, and so, yes, it's just been a good opportunity. And uh, again, I think it's cool and unique, like we talked about, like the trolley, right? Like we have that connection. You know, we have that resource where um, you know, there's a state tournament and how do we get people to state tournaments and everything like that. So it's kind of a really cool asset that I I don't always take for granted. I took for granted how difficult that running that organization could be. Uh, but I just think it's a good reminder for people to understand that um, it's a great asset in the community. So that's been fun. Um. I guess the other commentary, just to shout out to uh, City Works Cruise and Fields and Spring and being baseball fields, which I've made it pretty obvious isn't important to me in my life, but there are other play structures and fields that I'm sure they're getting ready to go and hopefully as spring continues to cooperate, um, because baseball games are starting here soon. Uh, which is fun. Um, so just appreciate, cuz I know a lot of goes when the snow disappears. There's a lot of stuff left and so I know the city works really hard to get those uh, fields and play spaces and soccer spaces and football spaces really active again and ready to go, so. Um, lastly, I will say that I took my first time. I'm gonna get the road wrong. I'm gonna be embarrassed by this. Just left me. The collector road going north and south that just opened up.
Savannah.
Thank you. I live right next to it.
I was gonna say, you live right there.
I took it cuz I'm, old habits are hard, right? So I go to Community Field. I still go on Fortnite or two nine or two twelve, take the exit, go through, go through Clop. I took that. It's it's great. I will not, if I can remember myself and break that habit, I will not go that way anymore. I will take Savannah. It's just fun to kind of see that space.
That's how me and Nate get to work and home every day.
Great route.
Yeah.
And a huge shout out to whoever idea was to put the digital sign there that says. And a huge shout out, whose every idea was to put the digital sign there that says, open to, you know, right? Like to make that connection, because I don't think that people naturally know, knew that that road would get you to where it got to.
Yeah. And it feels a little bit like you're not supposed to be back there still. So as more of it gets built out and signage and stuff.
Yeah, and we put up that sign there too, because the worst, and it's the worst because I've done it myself. Is when you turn and go down, uh, Inglor and you come up and you're like, ah, road's closed. Then you gotta turn around. So we put it up there. So people in Clover Ridge, if they're coming downtown, would remember, hey, you don't have to go that way. You can go this way.
Uh, then lastly, just some more connections to things that I interact with in the community. I know we, uh, several months ago, DBAT was in here looking for a continued to use permit. Uh, I will say they have actively been connecting with softball and baseball communities to get people in there. Uh, and so, and, and have good results. So they, um, I think every player got like seventy five free swings. That you can go in there and everything like that too. So jumping into the community, obviously they have incentive to get people in there to look at the facility. But that good partnership, so good to see that, uh.
Layer this month, right?
Yeah, I think they're, well, now they've been working with like the associations and people have been in there.
Yeah.
But yeah, they're hiring, looking for people and coaches, and they're looking for their, their opening here soon. So, um, just kind of fun, welcome to Chaska community, so.
Yeah.
That is all I have, Mayor.
Awesome. Great. Uh, Councilmember Shovelin.
Um, so I think similar to what you said, spring sports have sprung. And we've been up at the community center for gymnastics is what we're doing Mondays this, so we, the kids were gymnastics this afternoon. But it is really fun to see that community center, at least from the hours of five o'clock to eight o'clock when I'm there, very busy. There are people on ice, there are people walking the track, the gyms are full, pools, looks like it's got a lot going on in it, um.
It's been particularly full this year.
So I, I felt like it last week when I was at gymnastics, it was very refreshing to see people using the facilities. And, you know, in, in some context bragging about the different things that they could do while their kids were in, you know, recreational sports. Um, so that was very nice to see. It's also really great to see all the roadwork happening, the, you know, the, um. Bavaria Road closure is already up and there's a lot of work being done there. Eighty Second Street I saw was starting to put their signs up and, and work. So I think that's exciting. Um, and then lastly, I got to speak a couple of weeks ago to the Catholic School Cub Scouts. So it's Saks and Saint Hubert's, um, boy that are in Cub Scouts. And they just are amazing and they, I actually invited them to come and they, part of their, um. Government badge is to come in and see a live session, so they might, they might come do a visitor presentation on what they're learning in Cub Scouts next time. So, but it's really fun to see those kids. And I'm in that same vein, because my kids do go to Saint Hubert's, the Spring Gala is this Friday. And so if any of you are ever interested in what is going on in Catholic schools in your area, there's a lot of Chaska members. And the Spring Gala is a really great way to find out some of the great things those kids do that don't always make the news because they're little tiny teams. But they're, they're very, there's a lot of fun stuff going on there.
Do they still do the little stuffed animals on the beans for gymnastics?
They sure do. They sure do. Love that.
Uh, uh, okay, uh, Councilmember Hatfield.
Sure. Um, few things coming up. Coffee with a Cop is Wednesday, nine AM at Duncan. So that's always nice. Get some donuts with this one. Um, Taste of Chaska is coming up, May fourteenth, so that's very exciting. Um. Christmas in May is also coming up. The date's escaping me at the moment.
May third.
Third, thank you. So they're still, you can volunteer for that. Um, that's always a, it's one of my favorite days of the year, so recommend, um, if you're looking to get involved and just wanna. Dip your toes in the water of get volunteering, that's a good day to do it. Um. And so those are things, uh, some other things, the downtown signage is looking amazing.
Yeah.
I can't wait for us to turn the string lights on. What are they gonna turn on?
I saw them out there working on them today. I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to that too.
Yeah, every time I drive around, there's like a new sign up or whatever, and so then I saw the wires go up for the string lights. And then I saw the lights actually go up. I know, I did, the one, the arch first one up, I was driving down fourth and I was like, what? Yeah, anyways, um, but it's very exciting to see all that going up. So it's like, there's a little bit more every time I drive around, so, um, I'm excited for the historical markers to go up as well. That'll be really fun. Um, and then I've gotten a lot of comments on like the bigger signs too. Like as you are on sixty one or on forty one, um, that those signs are very nice directing and, and then also the public parking signs. So all of that is very exciting. Um. The Loop in the Town Course opened April tenth, so that was very exciting. Um, so you can get back into golf. It's been beautiful. A lot of weekends, um, and you can actually highly recommend trying out the Loop. Um, and, or the Minales and practicing your, like genuinely, I'm not even just saying this because I'm biased. But my putting improved a lot just spending a little bit of time on the Minales, because it is challenging. Yep, it's really challenging and you do just like, so if you're, you know, need to work on being less of a four putt, that's your time, the place to do it. So, um.
Uh, they open, so they, they do, uh, grab and go type stuff until usually about May twentieth.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and then last, just to kind of, um, Councilmember Gra kind of touched on Southwest Transit. But, um, they officially launched the six eighty six route, which I mentioned at our last meeting, um, and we had a launch party for that. Uh, unveiled the two new bus wraps that two local students did. One of them was from Chaska. They're very, they're both very cool designs and I may be a little biased, but the Chaska one is really cool. It has sunflowers and the rusty patch bumblebee, and it's just like a really cool bus.
We saw that on our way back from the Capitol.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw it yesterday too.
Yeah, so it's just really fun and, um, that route is already being, is very successful. We've had about the same amount of people using still like the direct to the airports, um, which you can only use through the end of the month. Um, as the new route, so it's already, um, adding a lot of value. People really love the park and ride. You can park and ride for five dollars a night, which is huge. Um, so that's amazing. So lots of exciting things happening. Also, as Councilmember Gra alluded to, there's lots going on with the agency. So for a long time, we've been working towards, um, being a direct recipient, um, for funding. And so we're, we're kind of working through some different options for that. It might be, uh, Matt, worth having a work session to kind of get everyone up to speed. Because for the new council members, it is a joint powers agency that, um, is Chaska, Chan, Hassan and Eden Prairie. Um, and so that board is made up of those members. Uh, and then it would be probably just good for you guys to all be aware though of all of that, that's going on, because it's a pretty big deal. And I think, um, I'm not sure if Eric, our CEO, is quite ready for it, but I know we had talked about getting, either trying to get all three cities together to do one. Or just some individual ones, but I think it would be good for you guys just to be aware of some of the efforts we're making legislatively to do that. And also, it's, it's pretty imminent, at least it seems so. I mean, things kind of change with the wind sometimes, uh, when you're dealing with like the Met Council and whatnot. But, um, it does seem like probably in the next year or two, that that's gonna be a very real thing, which is a huge change. Um, just a small example, right now, we don't buy our own buses, so those very expensive buses is, they're paid for by the Met Council. And we essentially, we use them. That would go to, for a direct recipient, we would need to buy our own buses, things like that. So that's huge. Need to add staffing, all sorts of things. So, um, just wanna kind of keep you guys in the loop in that, but it might be good to have a quick work session on as well, so. That is everything I have.
Okay, wonderful. All right, Councilmember Benish.
Um, I just wanted to bring some attention to first responders and mental health. Um, five years ago today, my paramedic partner at the time, Carl Meek, didn't show up for work. Um, I found out later that morning that he had committed suicide.
Hmm.
Um, and so I just wanted to bring some remembrance to him. And also let everybody know who is a first responder, that it's okay to ask for help, it's okay to not be okay, and there are resources. Carl left behind, uh, a lot of family and also a lot of fellow paramedics who still think about him. And, uh, you don't want to do that to those people. Just reach out, so that's all I have got.
Hmm.
Yeah.
That's. Uh, it's a hard topic.
Hard job.
But it's, it's good to say that and it's good to keep that in the forefront and, and, um, and have that. So appreciate you bringing that up. Um, okay, um, moving along, uh, oh, Nate, do you have anything?
Oh.
Okay, Krista? Matt?
Oh, sorry, can I, I'm so sorry. Matt, can I ask you, on the biweekly, you talked about the cannabis.
Yeah.
Situation with the state. I got a little confused.
Well, that's because it's really.
Okay, thank you. Thank goodness, because I was like, wait, what is happening? Could you just like take a couple of minutes and explain?
So, so the way this works is that there is different levels of licenses, uh, that the state has. And the first grouping of licensing that they're doing are called micro businesses. And micro businesses are defined by how big they are, but they also have to be a grower as well.
Oh.
And they, uh, have an unlimited number of, of micro business licenses that they issued at the state. You had to meet criteria, but they didn't have a limit. They have a limit of only like fifty retailer, uh, licenses within the entire state.
Oh, wow.
I don't think there's ever gonna be a true retailer, uh, the way they have this set up. Because they have, I think it was over eighteen hundred, uh, of these micro business licensees that they've given it to. Then what they do is they come out into the, into the communities that they want to be in and, uh, uh. You know, and then have to get registered by, uh, by the cities. And so our. Ours as well as most every other city's licenses or registrations are set up as first come, first served. And so, uh, people come through the door. We actually, uh, say in our ordinance that they have to go through, get their inspection. Pay their fee, do everything so that they're not just holding a spot. Um, and they get their sort of temporary registration from the city, then they have to go back to the state. Uh, tell them, okay, I got my registration from the city, this is the location I want to be in. The state has to come out and do the inspection of the actual facility. And once that happens, then the license becomes permanent there and the registration becomes permanent there.
So it's essentially whoever meets those qualifications and does that first, the first three for us?
Is it still three?
It's still three, yeah. So, so it doesn't change. It, that's why I'm convinced that, because most cities set the, the licenses at the minimum number. And if, I mean, how many cities are there? Eight hundred cities in the state? Um, and most of them are really tiny. Um, and so.
Based on population.
Yeah, so if there's almost two thousand of these micro business licenses out there. My sense is that most of the retailers are gonna end up being these micro businesses. Uh, and that you won't actually see it get to a retail, uh, license, uh, which is just selling the product, not growing it too.
So they have to, the micro like businesses have to sell or to grow and sell.
They don't have to grow on site, but they do have to grow. So in essence, they're selling their own product. Yep.
Do we know if any of the businesses in Chaska that might be in, that we might have any in that category right now?
Uh.
No.
No, I mean, uh. We hope. I mean, because. To me, this is just sort of.
You don't know.
To me, that's just, uh, it's been sort of indicative of this whole process of how this has come out. That it's just been sort of a free for all. And, you know, it doesn't change the fact that we can only, that we're only gonna allow three licenses, uh, to come in here and there'll be three businesses. Um, but I, I really sense that the, you know. That these businesses that establish themselves in communities sort of ahead of this. With the hope that they could be like, already have a head start to start their business when, when the licenses from the state occurred. I just don't know that it's gonna play out that way.
Hmm, yeah, that's kind of what it seemed, okay. Thank you for explaining that, because I did get a little confused, but that's more clear, so.
Yeah, it, I'll tell you what, when we, when we first sort of saw the flow chart of how everything went. It's like, this is, this is ridiculous. This is way too complicated.
Did they make it confusing to prevent it from really happening?
No, I think they, uh, to, to me, it's, I always say it's, they made it by committee.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, it's, it's just. I, I think, you know, it's been how many, two years that they've been working on this? And it's, uh, I, I guess that's the thing that, that, that I struggle with the most. Is that I am positive that there's probably businesses in this community that would like to have the license. But, um, but they just may not fall in line, uh, with the state licensing process. That, that allows them to be sort of that, that group that gets it, so. But we'll see. I mean, that's, I, we expect that we're gonna get, uh, inquiries very soon. Because the administrative law judge approved all the rules. Now they're getting that stuff out. And they've already sort of preliminarily decided who gets these licenses and.
Thank you.
Uh, the only other thing I had is, uh, that, so we have Christmas man, May third, which is a week from Saturday. Uh, but this Saturday at eight o'clock at Community Park is the tree planting. Um, and if you go out there now, um, there's flags where all the trees are getting, so we're planting a lot of trees. Uh, it's fifty to sixty trees, uh, planting out there, uh, replacing a lot of the, of the, uh. Uh, ash trees, uh, that we've lost to the Emerald Ash Board. Uh, but it's a, it's a fun event. It's a, it's one to bring your kids to. I mean, it's, uh, it's just a fun event. You know, the, the hole's dug for you.
Just shimmy that tree in there.
The tree, you just shimmy that tree in the hole and you just put dirt in there.
Well, that was my question was, do you, for folks that are interested in volunteering, do you want them to bring their own shovel? Or rake or both? Is that something that you'd like?
Yeah, it'd be great if they bring their, their own shovel and, and rake. Um, we do end up, uh, bringing some of the Christmas in May stuff down, so that there are some things of people.
Isn't it all in the water tower anyway?
It's all in the water, well, not that water tower.
Oh.
It's a, it's a, it's a different water tower. Yeah.
I've been inside the Clover Ridge one, yeah. Um, uh, okay. Uh, okay, so last couple of things, uh, yep, couple of groundbreakings happen. If, if you don't know, and you haven't been around, we have some road construction in this community. So work is being done on Eighty Second Street and also, um, Inglor Boulevard and Highway ten. So just make sure that you're looking at detour signs, road closure signs. Respect.
Or signs showing you where to go.
Signs showing you where to go, take an extra minute for your, you know, to get from two to, you know, to to fro on your commute around the city. Um, as that work is ongoing and it will continue to be ongoing all construction season long. Uh, we were able to get a bond hearing for City Square West. So we went down and, uh, testified before the House Capital Investment Committee. So that went really well. I felt really good about it. They had some positive words to say. So we'll just see how the session goes and we'll, we'll see what happens. Um, Highway forty one keeps, the project keeps winning awards. So was able to attend the. A S C E. Oh, uh, banquet and they had an award.
American Society of Civil Engineering.
Which, you know, I found out some, I mean, it was a whole presentation, so I found out a lot of things. They're actually global, which is kind of interesting. Um, and they have like a ring and that you have and all that sort of stuff. So, but we won an award, we won the top award for that, and then it sounds like we also won a national award, so. Different.
Yeah, so the American Public Works Association, uh, we ended up getting the national award for the best transportation project.
Is it, was it for the roundabouts on the north side of it or was it for the coming in?
It's for all this stuff through downtown.
Okay.
Yep, yeah. So, yeah, so every award it's gotten entered into, uh, it's won.
Very cool.
So it's kind of a, it's a very big, uh, very big deal, so. Um, and work is starting tomorrow in, uh, the City Square Park. I was just at Public Works this morning and they said that the, the fence scene was coming in tomorrow and they were, you know, gonna pull the pavers. And then lay the stuff down and do the ramp, so they had a whole plan. Which is gonna take time, but it's really exciting to see some work happening in the park. Um, also on May third is spring yard cleanup, uh, so, you know, if you have, uh, yard clippings. And, and things of that nature down at Athletic Park, uh, open from eight AM to two PM.
Real quick on that.
Yes.
Uh, so the, uh, Shakbe Midwakton Tribe has their new, uh, recycle center, organic center. Across, uh, the river where the. across, uh, the river where the Melkerson's horse track, uh, was, uh, down south here. Uh, in the month of May and October of this year, uh, if you're a Chaska resident, they're allowing you to bring down your stuff for free anytime during the month of May and October.
Oh.
Uh, so we're putting that advertisement out.
Okay.
So people.
So how do you prove you're Chaskers?
Yep.
Um, that's, that's really good to know. Um, and then let's see, I last tracked where I was at. I'm trying to find something else. There's also this Saturday, uh, Friends of the Library, their Chaska chapter is having a book sale from, uh, on Friday, two thirty to five, Saturday, ten to two thirty, um, on fiction books. So if you are a reader and you want to score some hot deals, they're pretty inexpensive. So, um, let's see, you talked about the taste of Chaska. Uh, the Southwest Chamber, two thing, or so actually along the lines. First responder luncheon is on Wednesday, April thirtieth at the event center. Uh, yeah, have to sign up through their website for that. And then, um, lastly, I like to mention, uh, every so often, certain things that are fun through parking racks. And one of the things that I participated in last year and I signed up again this year is a hundred mile, uh, run a hundred miles or walk a hundred miles in May. So it's like a five K every day basically. Um, and you register, it's open to residents and non-residents. And so for a nominal fee of either forty or forty-eight dollars, you can sign up through the website. You log your miles and they have little competitions each week. And then, um, at the end, you get a, like a sweatshirt or apparel of some sort.
One hundred on it.
Yep, and so you get to wear it as a badge of honor. So, you know, get, get your summer body going in May. I don't know, but, uh, but it's fun. It's a fun event, um, to do. And obviously you can do it outside, inside, at the community center, on your own. It's very fun. Next meeting is Monday, May fifth. I think we have work session.
Yeah, we're having a work session beforehand on, uh, discussion and franchise fees.
Yes, oh, yes, that's it. So, uh, yes.
Five thirty.
And there was one more thing. I, I feel bad if I didn't say it, but I forgot to add it to my thing. But Mikasa is having an event on the Saturday, April twenty-sixth here, from one thirty to four thirty in Chaska. I think it's at the event center. Um, Dia del Nino, Children's Day. It's a tradition honoring the innocence joy and well-being of children. So it's a fun-filled day dedicated to celebrating kids, promoting their mental health and raising awareness about child abuse prevention. So, uh, so yeah, that's all, that's all I got. Uh, anybody else? Otherwise, last call. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hatfield and second by Councilmember Benish. I think you've gotten yourself on every single one. Must've been like a personal goal of yours tonight. All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.